It is 6:30, so we are going to call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone and ask you to please stand for a moment of silence in the pledge. And now the pledge.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agreement.
Motion by Mr. Bairdow.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Talby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Public comments. We have several, so if you all could, we'd like to keep it to around five minutes. So we will start with Ms. Allison Fuller.
Hello. My name is Allison. This is my son Anthony. He's 13. He is actually standing in for my 14-year-old. He refused to give up football practice to be here. So I'm a mother of four children in Clark County public schools. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to share my experience with virtual learning. Tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of getting my children back into schools. I have two boys at RDC, age 13 and 14, one at Stroud that is eight, a four, and almost three-year-old in a public preschool. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my 14-year-old son. Sorry. Hunter has severe ADHD and has struggled in school since he started at Hannah McClure. He currently and has always had an IEP. Virtual learning has been a nightmare for my son. Thank you. Trying to find all the assignments located in different places, using unfamiliar apps, lagging Chromebooks, learning how to navigate through submitting assignments differently for each teacher in class, and the workload of a minimum of 22 assignments a week. Hunter currently plays football for eighth grade, the eighth grade team at RDC. Last Thursday on eighth grade night, grades and eligibility were ran for the first time since virtual learning started, and there were 35 ineligible football players. Let me qualify that by saying the football coaches, parent volunteers, and even administration running grades tried their best to help these kids to be able to play. Thirty-five ineligible players should speak volumes as to what virtual learning is doing to these children. Some of those 35 are normal honor roll students. This could have been their last game. They were told upon arriving they would not be on the field. I advocate strongly for my son, as it is my job to protect and make sure he is getting everything in my power that he requires through his federally funded IEP. I spoke with the athletic director, then the assistant principal. I explained that I felt his IEP requirements were not being met and to make him ineligible to play was more than unfair because the requirements put forth in the IEP weren't being met. Hunter loves his coaches and strives to please them every day. That night, he played his best game ever. My son needs his teachers. He needs help. I, as a full-time working mom, can't give him all the help he needs. Sitting in our kitchen every night deciding which one of my children need my help the most is taking a huge mental toll on myself and my kids. These kids need to return to school. I am not putting my children at risk by asking you to send them back. I am making sure I do not fail my child in the future when it comes time for them to live on their own, go to college, and build a family life. I need the teachers as much as them. Please don't fail my kids any more than we already have. This virtual learning is not working. It is not at all successful in hordes of homes throughout the district. I urge you to find a way to send our kids back to school and still protect the students and teachers who are part of the population that are vulnerable to COVID-19. Not being in school is devastating to many children in the county. Suicide rates and opioid abuse are on the rise, as is crime, while child abuse and neglect reporting sharply declined without teachers and school staff regularly interacting with students. Not everyone is safe at home. Many are not healthy at home when you consider the mental health side of the equation. Our kids and my kids need to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Hall.
Hello. My name is Cameron Hall, and I'm a teacher at the preschool. I've taught in Clark County for 15 years, and I've seen the preschool grow and change. Today, I would like to tell the board how it is time to build a new preschool now. When I first started teaching, the preschool program was housed in trailers at each of the elementary schools. After two years in trailers, we moved to an old factory that was rewired to accommodate the preschool in a single location. We were so excited to be under the same roof, but the building had a lot of issues. Only four of the classrooms in that building had windows. The others were in the interior of the building, and there was no fresh air or natural light. It was basically a dungeon. The preschool was also not the only business housed in that building, and it was as secure as we could make it at that time. The district then moved preschool into its current location at Hannah McClure. We were told that this would be a temporary home until we had a new building. Four years ago, the planning committee looked at the building of a new preschool, and we went up against the athletic complex. We're asking that you now consider making good on the promise of a new state-of-the-art preschool building that we have been patiently waiting for. The Hannah McClure building was built in the 1950s. It is not made for preschool-age children. There are seven classrooms that have to share two bathrooms with a combined seven stalls. These classrooms have to interrupt their classroom instruction to take time to go to the bathroom. Have you ever tried to potty train a child? When they have to go, they have to go, and trying to work that time into the day is very tricky. And now, in terms of COVID, these classes have to have scheduled bathroom times because they can't have children interacting, and we have to sanitize between each classroom use. And then can we talk about the ramps at Hannah McClure? There are two steep ramps in the hallway that lead to the upper and lower hallways. We're asking children to walk in line and traverse these steep hills to get to and from their classrooms. It's very difficult to keep these kids in line and not running up and down the ramps. We also have children that come to school in wheelchairs or have walkers, that it's very difficult to help them maneuver through these hallways. Preschool does not have central air. We just got new air conditioners that we really appreciate, but there's no fresh air circulating in our building. In the winter, the school is heated with a boiler system, and the classrooms are either too warm or too cold. There is no happy median in these buildings. We have a large playground that we have worked really hard to make fun and exciting for our children. The problem is, we have to cross a parking lot that has a blind corner that people have to pull around to to get to our parking lot. The parking lot is in the back of the school, and the cars have been flying around. It is not safe to walk these children across the road to the playground. At other schools, children walk directly out from the school onto the playground. We are asking the youngest children in the county to walk across the road to get to a playground. We also have outgrown the current building that we are in. We have two trailers that house three additional classrooms. We are busting out teams. The program is growing and evolving, and we need room to grow. Preschool has been overlooked so that other schools can have the things that they need. It is time for Clark County to support the preschool and build the school that we can be proud of. The program is amazing. We work hard for the most vulnerable children in Clark County. We are a five-star program that deserves a five-star building to better meet the needs of all the kids in Clark County. We are the first experienced families have in school, and we want to continue making the children in Clark County kindergarten ready. Thank you for your time and consideration to put preschool as a number priority.
You don't want to get off of life, it's hard to prove it. I've been telling him that three months to wipe it off.
Sarah Howard.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Sarah Howard, and I am a Clark County preschool parent, and I'm here to talk to you all about the need for this new preschool. My daughter was born a premature child, like me that we have, and she, because of that, has been delayed in many areas, speech being the main one. Whenever she started with the First Steps program, we knew that the date was looming, that she had to come out at three years old. We didn't know what we were going to do. We could not afford private pay preschool, or private pay speech therapy. And we were struggling to pay for private preschool. So at the end of it, we had this meeting that says, "You qualify to go to preschool." Well, we were shocked. We were so thrilled to have this opportunity. And she entered into the school and started with her speech therapist, and she couldn't tie two words together. Now, I can't get her to hush. She kind of drives me crazy. She's on her third year in the preschool, and we have thoroughly loved everybody there. When Ella was, sorry, she was diagnosed last year with an autoimmune disease. And that led to on chemo. Sorry. They made accommodations for her, and her teacher was the only person outside of the family who came to visit her in the hospital. And she's become part of our own family. Sorry. Okay. If not for the preschool, Ella would be starting kindergarten next year. She's a very hushed young child. She would be having major anxiety. She would be very far behind. And I would potentially be in meetings pushing to for her to be medicated, because I know my child. But because of this, she's been given a step ahead and is able to enter kindergarten next year, ready to go. She started her first day back today. She was up at 8:00, even though school came in at 11:00, dressed with her shirt, her dress on backwards, ready to go. She was so excited and was so upset that she couldn't go to school immediately. The preschool currently does have seven classrooms with no bathrooms, and they're sharing seven stalls with basically 250 children. I potty train my own children. It's awful. You have to sit there for 30 minutes sometimes trying to get them to pee on the potty. And these teachers take their time to really work with these kids that come to school and not potty trained. The way the school really needs individual bathrooms for each classroom. The ventilation is awful in Hannah McClure. There is no fresh air circulating at all. And this year of all years, we really need fresh air circulating in our classrooms. And I don't know if any of you have walked through the halls of Hannah McClure, but like Cameron said, the ramps are awful. I have walked up and down those ramps, and for a grown adult like me, it is difficult. We're asking our most vulnerable and youngest population to walk up and down these ramps. And the teachers do a wonderful job at adapting. They have wagons. They have other things to get them up and down, but they shouldn't have to do that. They should be given the best environment to succeed. The new high school complex cost over $100 million, and it was definitely needed, but so was the preschool. And I beg of you to put the preschool and Phoenix Academy at the top of your list. Take a fraction of that money and build a better quality environment so these teachers can expand the program and allow these children to have a wonderful environment to succeed in and get them the head start that they need. Thank you.
Becky Kissick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I hand these out if you don't mind? Becky Kissick, Public Health Director here in Clark County. When I was here in August, I made the commitment that I would continue to provide monthly updates for where we are in the county when we start thinking about COVID. What you will see in front of you is the most updated information that we have available. This is as of 4:30 today. And this is something that at each juncture, the Reentry Task Force is examining and reviewing. You will see on there that as of today, we are now at 498 cases with 50 active, but the number that we love to report is that 438 recoveries. In addition to that, however, you will see below that, broken down, is the monthly trend data. For the first 12 days in the month of October, we have confirmed 50 cases, and that is putting us on track to be ahead of where we were last month, of course. You flip that sheet over, you're going to see our weekly trends. You can see that last week was a very big week for us, not our biggest, but coming in close, at 36 confirmed cases. We are definitely on an upward trend, and we hope that we see that change or pivot back down. You'll see the cases are broken down by age distribution as well. One of the things I want to draw your attention to is that there are actually 495 ages reported here, but you just heard me say we had 498 cases. Part of that is, in the spirit of full transparency, we are taking kind of a hard look at every piece of data we have available. On Thursday, we brought in a member of our regional state team, and they're going through each and every bit of data that we have available. There were three laps of the 498 that had a slightly different birth date that we are working to confirm the age information on. It is very important to us that the information that we share out as a health department is the most accurate data that we have available, and that we stand by that data. In addition to that, you will see there are broken down our pediatric ages, that kind of 0-18 population can give you a sense of our school-aged children, a racial distribution, and on the back is the state map. This state map is a map that Mr. Talby and I have talked long and hard about. This state map is a great resource for what I would call as an at-a-glance reference. You will see that there on the bottom of that, the state has added the caveats of how that information is being calculated. But what I will assure you is that this information will never specifically match the information coming out of the local health department. And I'm saying that because we are reporting that information in real time. We are not waiting for it to be uploaded into that NEDS database and accepted. We are reporting it as we work them and as we confirm those cases. This is one of the pieces that I think the Reentry Task Force has truly gotten right, because what they have said is that this is a great metric, it's a great at-a-glance and a great reference, but it needs to be paired with the local information. We talked a lot the last time about pairing that information with kind of a description of where our cases come from. Right now, we are seeing community spread. In May, that was a little bit different. In May, you heard me talking a whole lot about long-term care and a long-term care outbreak. So understanding the local trends, understanding that local data, paired with and at-a-glance is truly what's important. The Reentry Task Force has been a wonderful collaborative effort in terms of, there's a lot of diverse opinions, a lot of diverse insight, but I think it's made us stronger incorporating all of those pieces. Those metrics paired with this map give us a great path forward for safely bringing the students back. Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Renee Pares. Hang on, just a second. Sorry.
Don't make it quiet. My name is Renee Carey. I am a first grade teacher at Concrete Elementary. I've been a first grade teacher for 17 years following this town. I came today to tell you just a little bit about what first grade is like in our building right now. We started beginning kids last, about two, three weeks ago. Today, and last week were the first times we've had small groups in. So today, I have five boys, four six-year-olds, in masks in school. It's doable, but it's going to take some work, you know? Social distancing in the hallway is real fun. We've got the circles, so circles are a good thing until we start walking. So it's doable, but with five boys, I took a three-four to the hallway. So if I have a full, even if we go back full force, 27 kids, I'm going to be around the building, like twice, you know, social distancing six feet. I came today to talk about the hybrid that you guys don't like, but it's, to me, the only thing that's going to work, especially with the kids that we have in our building. The hybrid being the AB, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, Thursday, Friday, the other half goes. These are our numbers. I have 27 kids in my class, and I'm the lucky one because I have the biggest room. I have the corner room, you know, your corner office. I got the corner room. It's huge. I'm allowed to have 11 kids with social distancing, 11. I have 27 assigned. I have 17 that want to come back in person. I can do it. I'm the lucky one. You know, I can do nine and eight. I can get 17 in my room. That's no problem. The girl in the room next to me has, I'm going to make that switch on, sorry. There's 26 students. 19 of hers want to come back, but she can only fit eight in her room. That's a big difference between eight and, you know, eight and 11 doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot when you're trying to fit that many kids in a classroom. She can't do it. I mean, we want to do it. We all want our kids to come back. We've got to figure out a way for this to work. I mean, it's going to be the best way for it to work. Another classroom has 27 kids. 17 of hers want to come back. She can only fit eight. Eight and eight, 16, she can only fit, she has 17 that want to come back. So, I mean, there's one more class. Next class has 25, and these are the smaller rooms. Like I said, I'm the lucky one to get the big room. This is the smallest room. She's got the dungeon with no windows. She's got 25 kids. 13 of hers want to come back. She can only fit eight. She can do it. Eight, eight. She can do it. So that's kind of like the dynamic. We want our kids to come back. The hybrid will make it work better. There's no way we can have all of them come back at once. It's just, it's not feasible with the size of our rooms, with trying to keep masks on kids, social distancing in the hallway. I had one hide his mask in his pocket and kind of look the other way the other day, you know, trying to think, "She won't see me," you know, so he could get us out, put that on again, because he was working at his desk. We were social distanced out. Like I said, I'm the lucky one to get the big room. It can be done. I think we've got a plan. We talked about what we would do on these days, how we would do our work. We're working our hind ends off, staying late most days, getting stuff ready for the packets that go out. You know, our kids are getting all their subjects. They're getting math, science, social studies. I mean, we're staying late. We're giving them science experiments, and we can do it. We can do the same thing, the AB for the hybrid AB. Some good things that we've seen, it seems like, you know, it's all negative, is the small groups are also reaching those kids, like little Johnny in the back who's normally quiet, doesn't say anything. I can get to him. I can see that, "My gosh, his handwriting is really bad," or "He can't count." There's one little girl, I didn't, she could recognize that number. She couldn't recognize the number. She couldn't count. The little things like that that we're seeing, working in the smaller groups, these kids aren't getting missed, you know? The smaller groups are helping in more ways than one. It's helping with immune, but it's helping them get reached and get the things that they need the most. That's basically all I have to say. It's just basically the hybrid's what's going to work for our kids. It's going to work for our little ones. It's going to make sure that they get the education that they need, the little stuff like, you know, keeping their masks on, social distancing in the hallway. It's a lot easier when you have a smaller group of kids. Thank you.
Amy Fitzgerald.
She's in the...
What's the name?
Annie Fitzgerald.
Annie?
Annie.
I'm here to talk about the preschool. I was asked this morning to just say a few words about what the preschool meant to our family, and I'll be very sure. I promise. Sorry, I'm also not good at this. My oldest son had one year of preschool with the incomparable Miss Lewis, and as the first mother turning him over to a school, I was really nervous. But she made it all right. I was worried he wasn't quite potty trained. I didn't know he knew the things he needed to know to go to preschool, you know? What had I done? I don't know. I don't know how to teach a kid. She not only taught him, she involved me in his education, and it made me realize that I could help teach my child, that I could be involved in his education, and we became a family, the little preschool class and us. He went off to Stride Station, wonderful school, love it, and my youngest went in to Head Start. He was a little harder, as the second child often is. He had speech issues. He needed PT. And just the availability of the services through preschool and Head Start, just the family-like atmosphere of being there. And this is just a program that needs to be expanded. It needs to have a facility where they can keep doing what they do. I mean, I just, I have been involved. I got to fill in for someone that went on maternity leave, and then again, someone that had some issues, health issues. And so I got to spend about six months being in the system and watching how they worked around all of the things in Hannah McClure that you don't, you shouldn't have to work around, in preschool, right? They leave the bathrooms. Having a bathroom in the classroom is just, it just makes sense. Every other preschool has that. That needs to happen, right? Even our kindergartens have that, you know, or at least at Stride they did. So I'm sorry, I totally got off topic. What I wanted to say was that Head Start preschool not only introduced my children to structure and the routine of the classroom, to the expectations and responsibilities of being a good student, but it taught me how to be engaged in their education. The women that taught my boys showed me how to be a partner with them for my children, and I think every kid in this county deserves that. Thank you.
That is the end of public comments, so we are on to item number two. Discuss and consider approval of the local planning committee four-year district facility plan, all the stuff. There you are. I was not really yelling at you.
Payback, I'll love it. Just a really brief recap. We, some months ago, prior to the pandemic getting, constructed a district facility planning process because our district facility plan, our four-year plan, was due KDA in August that most recently passed. We constructed a committee consisting of two KD guidelines, consisting of school administrators, board members, Ashley was chair of that committee, school administrators, parents, teachers, parent educators, community business owners, community agency leaders, planning and zoning, pretty good microcosm of your community. intentions for the district. I'd also mention that Ross Toronto also was, was the architectural firm that the board hired to facilitate our K fix process, which assessed in every one of our buildings, quite specifically, every system in every one of our buildings that we included in the state's new database. So Randy and Ross Toronto are very familiar with every need that we have. It's really difficult to breathe with this mask on, and with, with every need of our buildings and our construction, our facilities. So, um, given that, Randy's prepared to talk with you about the plan if you so choose, or he's F P's here to help us answer any specific questions you might have, if you'd like to enter discussions, maybe on consideration of passing this plan as presented.
Mr. Stone, can you kind of walk us through the process from approval to breaking ground on pre, on, on construction if, if we move forward?
As far as the priority number one?
Yes, yes. I mean, just, you know, the approval process from here to the state to timeline to, you know, what, what, you know, just kind of walk us through for us, for ourselves as well as the community.
Okay. Tonight, if the board were to approve, well, the board has the option to approve this plan or send it back to committee for, for recommendations. Assuming that you were to approve this plan tonight, we would have a public hearing. Uh, people from the public would come and be recorded with any statements they would have relative to the process of this plan. We would then submit that public hearing back to the board and have it approved. You'd have to approve four, or the minutes or the report for the hearing next board meeting. If you were to approve that, then we'll K D E for final approval. Once K D E approves that process, at their point, then you can begin BG one process for any of the projects on level one that you'd like to consider. Actively represent that?
Yeah, so the Kentucky State Board of Education, K D E meets every two months. So right now, the schedule that we're on, we can get that on the December agenda. I think that's early in the summer. I don't remember the specific date. But assuming that we are able to meet that schedule, they can approve it at their meeting. And then that becomes the official D F P, district facility plan for the districts is on file with K D E. So after that point, the board could choose to issue or approve, review and approve a BG one to initiate a project. Um, assumedly, one of the priority one or both of the priority one projects. Um, or that, that D F P could sit there for some period of time until the board was ready to review and approve each one. But you do have to have a D F P in place, uh, and, and with, that corresponds to the project that you're wanting to move forward. K D E will check back against the D F P to make sure that any project that you are moving forward with the board is actually listed on the D F P.
So it sounds like there's not an official commitment to move forward until, uh, it's approved by Kentucky State Board and then comes back and then we would decide.
The earliest that the board decides to move forward with a project that's listed on, on this D F P, the new D F P, would be following the December Kentucky State Board meeting, which I think is December 2nd or the first week in December sometime. But that doesn't mean you have to.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, so if I could ask a follow-up question, so the previous district facility plan, is that still valid?
The current district facility plan, even though it was supposed to be re-approved in August or a new one submitted in August, we were on a delay because of the whole pandemic. The current D F P that you have in Frank Curle on file is your current D F P. So that stands until this new D F P is approved by the state.
Correct.
So if this process, let's say, got bogged down, we could say, well, we've got the old one that's got the preschool on, it is item two C, we could potentially move forward on that based upon, because it's, it's right in line on the old project.
You can do that. I've had a district recently move forward with the, with the project that was on the old D F P because the new D F P was still in process. Yes.
So what's the difference between the two? Why, why wouldn't you just stay with the current plan?
Well, K D E requires you to update your D F P every four years.
Okay.
So you go through this process every four years with the local planning committee to update your D F P. Uh, that's a requirement at the state level. Uh, so the, the, even though the, the preschool was on the old D F P, it was a two C project, which means it wasn't a priority one project, uh, so it was in that priority two category, which means you could do that now. You could absolutely approve a BG one right now and move forward with that. But the new D F P actually takes the projects that you completed off the list, obviously, and the L P C considered all of this, and then they have identified the two priority projects that are the priority one projects, that the intention is, the way that it's listed, priority one projects are intended to move forward within the first, by any of the first two years of that four-year plan.
Also answering your question, the last, well, we've gone back and forth with the preschool program in particular, to from new construction to renovation to McClure, back to new construction. So I think on the last, most current district facility plan, it's calling for the re, uh, the renovation of McClure Elementary School for preschool. So that would be the huge difference.
The current plan has renovation for Hammond McClure?
That's correct.
That is correct. That's a really good point, y'all. I had, I had forgotten about that.
And thus, we would be limited to a renovate, a renovation approach?
That would be my understanding, yeah.
That is correct.
So when they look at, when it goes to, um, K D E for approval, do they take into consideration, um, our $2 million shortfall and our, they don't look at that at all?
They look at bonding potential, is all they would look at, is the, is the capital bonding. And which, I think Ross and Claire today to you at your last meeting?
Yes.
It has to be specifically for construction projects.
Is the, uh, public forum still scheduled for the 14th?
It is.
So?
It's subject to rescheduling though. We may make it regularly if necessary.
It seemed to me that that probably meant that superintendent or somebody secured three votes before this happened. I'm not sure whether or not.
My understanding is that it meant that where the plan was due in August and we're trying to make the December deadline, that was the intended now.
Actually, I think Mr. Heiselt requested that it stay and we revisited it tonight, right?
Well, we knew we were going to revisit it tonight.
Right. But you asked that we keep the...
Normally, until a plan is passed, you don't do that.
But you asked to keep the October 14th.
Yeah, but it was already put in the paper and, and that way we can...
I don't think it was asked at the meeting.
We can have that all.
Yeah, but there was a whole conversation that went on after that, correct, Ryan?
Correct. Well, it still wasn't in his form of motion to keep that on there. From what I understand, Mr. Christie threw quite a fit afterwards because he put it on there, so it wasn't here.
We checked with legal counsel, both of them.
That's fine. Uh, I don't have any, uh, uh, thoughts against the committee. You know, I love when people get involved and do the things on committee that they should, uh, that they should do. And it, it's always good to have people come in and work on things. What I, my biggest issue with the whole plan is the limitations that it puts on either this board or the next board to discuss the educational future of all the kids here in Clark County. Um, you know, uh, at one of the meetings that I was at, somebody asked about, you know, what is the vision of this district? And I kept listening and I kept listening, come back to another meeting, I kept listening, and I never did hear the vision. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of things that we have to talk about. And when you put things as a number one, it just keeps you from, uh, from talking about those things. And you're not going to get me to deny that something needs to be done with preschool. It does. You know, I went in last year and had a long, long conversation with Ms. Davies to talk about my thoughts, my ideals on this. And of course, we differ. There is no doubt we differ. But we still have a responsibility, this Board of Education, to do what's best for the entire district of Clark County. I mean, I think we've got to sit and discuss, you know, you're seeing an increased population at Stride Elementary. You're seeing an increased amount of building in this area up here. What is going to be our need for a new elementary school in the future? Something we have to look at. The Phoenix Academy, along with their great program, can be really good and beneficial to a few kids. Most of us on here have been through expulsion hearings. Couple of us have, and sometimes we forget about school safety. You know, we're talking about building the building back onto the campus where students were removed from. You know, guys, you know, it doesn't seem like much now, but it can seem like a lot in the future. Budget cuts may be in the future. And like it or not like it, preschool full day, preschool half day, could be a major issue in a budget cut. You're probably looking at over a half a billion dollars to run a preschool from a half a day to a full day. So I think there are so many things probably that this board, the people sitting here, will not be able to talk about. They'll have to be on different boards or whatever there. But I just think when, when you come in on a project and you tell the Board of Education that you cannot look at these other limitations that are going on in the district, that it really hampers some of the things that we need within our district. Now, maybe they're already decided that this is what they want to do. That's fine. I'm all right with that. But I still think there are bigger things out there on the table that we could look at. I'm not convinced that our current program of five, six, seven, eight, then high school is the best program for kids. I understand why we did it, when we did it, because we had to have the room, and that's why we did it. But is that the best thing for the students of Clark County? This board, some board, needs to talk about that. Now, maybe it all comes back around and we say the preschool is still number one, but at least give your elected officials an opportunity to discuss those things.
Well, with my understanding of the discussion so far, we'll have, we'll have that ability, the board will have that ability to discuss certain things, even if we do approve, if the board does decide to approve this, um, it could, like, like, I'm sorry.
Randy.
Randy. Um, like, like you said, was, um, you know, it, it could sit there if we don't act on it, and it's good for four years. So it does give the board time, if the board does decide to look at other things, um, before a final decision's made. But, um, I think it, I think it would do injustice not to, at least for us to have this on the state board's agenda in December for them to consider.
Well, I, I know, again, I just feel like what you're doing is you are taking the voice away from the individuals that were elected to make the decisions for the educational future of the students in Clark County. Yes, you can go back and do that, but why wouldn't it be easier now just to say to committee, we'd like for you to look this over and to add these things to the number ones? Then that gives you an opportunity. You can't really discuss them if you don't have the ability. You can't talk about, you know, uh, doing a sixth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth middle schools if there is no possibility in your plan of doing a sixth, seventh, and eighth. And, and maybe nobody wants to do it. Maybe, you know, has anybody sat down and looked at the data, where that puts us at? And, and does that put us behind? I think those are all things that we have to, to put into these things. And again, I'm not saying we're going to look at this and pull that off the table. And under no plan that I could see is that we don't see an improvement for what they have at the preschool. I think there has to be. I mean, there's lots of different things. You could get into plans for the rest of the night to talk about how you could. And I think every time, probably with the exception of when we did athletic facility, the facility at preschool improved. You know, we went from Travers, we went from Curly's, we went to Hammond McClure. And, and, and we've improved each time on that with the space and the things that we've done. And, and I don't look for that to be any different on this time, even though I won't be the one making those decisions, that's going to come somewhere else. But I think that this board has to have the opportunity to sit down, have Mr. Christie, people like that come in and explain to us, what do you think about the fifth, sixth? Why shouldn't we go to a junior high? What is better? What are we missing? What are we gaining? You know, look at all those kind of things. What do we think about the Phoenix Academy? How, how is that going to work there? What's going to be the drawbacks? I know we put up a trial balloon several years ago about Phoenix Academy at R D C and that, and Mr. Christie told you that, that was met with a lot of resistance from a lot of different people. And right now, we're not seeing a lot of school threats or things like that. You don't hear much of that, but you will hear a lot of that when that cycle comes back. Those are all things that I think this board has to talk about. Again, I'm not out here trying to kill a project. I'm just saying that as elected officials, we should have the opportunity to sit and talk and make a great decision for this district because, you know, we're probably going to look, I think they estimated 16 million, and if they're anything like they used to be, we're probably looking at more like 17, 17 and a half, Mr. Christie, would you say?
For what?
For the amount of bonding potential. They said 16 by July.
Yeah. Well, we're 15 now, and they said probably 16 by July.
But it's probably going to be, it wouldn't surprise me to be 17, 17 and a half if they're, if they've done anything like what they've done in the past. I mean, you know, guys, look at some possibilities that could happen. You know, could the preschool move into an existing building that we have right now and a new elementary be built? You know, I, I think you can look at a lot of those type of things. Again, I'm not against things, early childhood education, there's nobody in the world's going to tell you it's not important. And you see the things that are here tonight, and these are individual parents coming in, how their families were touched, and that's what the preschool is for. Unfortunately, the program itself doesn't hit every parent like what it did here. And that's not to say we don't have people between those walls that are doing great jobs every day. But the preschool is a program that's been here since the early war on poverty in 1963. And the program has never worked. And we talk about expanding the program, it's not a good thing when we have to keep getting more kids in to the preschool. The whole point of the preschool, the whole point of the war on poverty was to take people away from that. And, and what we're seeing here tonight, we're seeing a great school that's doing a good job to some parents. I mean, the statement that was made by Ms. Fitzgerald, involve me in his education? That's the whole point of preschool. That's where it should be. And, and if this district could somehow get that preschool to get these parents, every parent involved like this and make a difference, because that does make a difference how a kid starts to school. When they start at preschool, they, you know, they, people talked about kindergarten, they talked about, then they got the four-year-olds and three-year-olds, and we just kept on getting them all down, and here we are, sixty, almost 60 years later, and we're still throwing things into preschool. And not, again, it's a very, very important program that we have and very beneficial. But does it outweigh the other needs that we have in this district? And I don't think it's right to take the voice away from our elected officials who do that.
Well, in response, I'd like to say that I was elected for a four-year term, which doesn't end until December. And, um, much like my predecessor before me that, that voted on a district facility plan during the year before the, uh, I would take office, uh, I feel that certainly was his right. And I'd also like to represent my district by being able to move forward on, of this plan. I think, um, I, I'd be open to discussion about the Phoenix Academy, whether it should be in, in the ones. But I really think the need of this district and our families for the preschool, I don't want to say...
And not, again, it's a very, very important program that we have, and very beneficial. But does it outweigh the other needs that we have in this district? And I don't think it's right to take the voice away from our elected officials who do that.
In response, I'd like to say that I was elected for a four-year term, which doesn't end until December, and much like my predecessor before me that, that voted on a district facility plan during the year before the, I would take office, I feel that certainly was his right, and I'd also like to represent my district by being able to move forward on, of this plan. I think, I, I'd be open to discussion about the Phoenix Academy, whether it should be in the ones, but I really think the need of this district and our families for the preschool, I don't want us to dilly-dally anymore on it. I want to see us move forward on it because, you know, I, I was lucky growing up. I had two parents and a good supportive family structure and, but I was lucky, and not everybody has that, and I think we need to address those needs, and every month, every half-year, every year that we put it off is hurting those children. And I, I'd like the opportunity to try to move forward on this next critical plan. I mean, it was, you know, leftover from the old plan is, is, it was the second item, it was the next item up, and I think it still needs to be done, and it's, it's something that's really critical for our, our children, and it's, it's certainly frustrating that more progress hasn't been made in the last 50 years, but I think a lot of that is a fact, is, is a function of what's going on in the family structure at home. But what we can do as a school district is do the best we can to try to address that and help, help our kids that, that need the most help. And so I, I fully support trying to move forward on the district facility plan as drafted, especially as putting the preschool as the number one priority. That's my perspective.
So let me just clarify. So if it gets approved from KDE and it's preschool, then you can't go and change it, and you can't decide, oh, well, maybe we need an elementary or, or, you know, it's a preschool. That's what your money's for.
There is a process during your four-year plan. You can do an amendment, which, if, if your population changed or your circumstances changed, KDE will let you go through an amendment process that involves reconvening the LPC, revisiting some of these issues, and then the LPC could, or the revised plan for the board's consideration. So there is a process to change that within the four-year district facility term.
But you have to also assume that KDE will support your request. Right now, you have four elementary schools that are considerably under enrollment, and you would have to ask the Department of Education to support building a new elementary school considering that.
I was just saying, for instance, I, I mean, we, we haven't even looked at the numbers. We don't, we don't know, but I'm just asking, asking the question.
I think, I may need to answer that there is a process, process.
They're under enrollment, you know, basically because we did make that decision to go five, six. I mean, that, that's one of the reasons, I mean, that, that's, you know, it's unfortunate in school systems that the amount of money that you have drives your decision. And I'm not saying that's not, that wasn't a bad decision. That was the best decision we could make at that time. What I'm saying is that I really think that, that you're at a time right now to where you can take a logical look and say, this is the way we want to be for the rest of time, because after this 17 being goes through, I'm not sure what else goes through. So I, I do believe that, that, you know, we should have an opportunity to speak about that. And I understand that everything Mr. Eisner said is right. I mean, you're not quite, again, you're not going to convince me anything about it's not right for, to do early childhood, and the things that he talked about, and that's, that's why it was put there, because everybody knows that, that, you know, at one time, that there were kids that were ready to go to school and there were kids that weren't ready to go to school. And preschool comes in to fulfill that role of getting those students ready to go to school. But we have lots of other things out there too that have a big impact on, on, on this district and what happens. I mean, there's a lot of big issues that are out there, but, again, it's very difficult, and, you know, even my discussions, you know, with Ms. Davies, who is as passionate as anybody about, you know, what she does, you know, but, you know, it's just a different perspective. I, I do believe we have an opportunity to be able to sit and, and look, and I'm probably not going to change anybody's mind on here, I'm not, you know, I'm not there. I'm just saying that I just think as a Board of Education, we have a responsibility for everybody in this district, and we have a responsibility to get students coming out of high school that are as employable as possible, and is the current system we have right now, is our vision in line with that. I mean, again, the preschool is just a building. If this teacher that, that affected Ms. Fitzgerald is not there doing that, that building is not going to do that. It's the people within, within that building that make these things happen. And I'm not saying that a new building, there's not more problems. I know the, the cafeteria situation is awful, the, the situation they talk about with the restrooms is awful, but, you know, I mean, just go through, look at our view for our schools all, and then look at Hammond and Clure. It's easy to say, I mean, but, you know, there are really things I think we need to talk about in this district.
And as facility director, I would feel responsible to also advise the board that given all the schools that we either renovated or rebuilt, preschool and Phoenix Academy are two that have not experienced those. And considering the population of those two schools, being children in poverty, and children with disabilities, and children at highest risk, I'd almost venture to say that the board is at high risk of being accused of discrimination for facility discrimination. I guess how you could allocate your funds to schools and neglected those two.
I'd say we'd be hard pressed to say that. I mean, we go, we go a full day, five days a week, and there's not many school systems around here.
I'm assuming you mean facility discrimination.
Well, you know, still, what we do for, for those people right there, and, you know, and where we've got people are not great places, they're not dogs, you know.
I'd say Hammond and Clure, you're getting very close to.
Well, Hammond and Clure, Hammond and Clure has, has had its time, and that's what I'm saying, and I would never, ever go toward any plan that did not move those children somewhere else. But I'm just saying, not having the ability or not having the board the ability to do it, to not talk about a vision of where we want this district to go, I think all of those things feed into, to a committee that we need to work on. But I understand, you know, I agree with you on Hammond and Clure. I really do.
My son was there not too long ago. I thought it was a great school.
Well, it is a great school.
It doesn't seem like it's been that long ago.
It has a lot of hidden concerns, facility ones.
Those ramps are not near as fun as they were when I was 10 years old.
No.
And I understand, you know, I understand Mr. Faridol's point, but I don't, I don't agree with it or respectfully disagree with it. And with that said, I, I'd like to, unless there's other discussion, I'd like to move forward with motion.
Can I say something real quick? Because I did sit on that facility committee, and I do think that we also need to keep in mind that that, it passed, how many meetings did we end up having through COVID? I mean, we were shut down, brought back together, and that still.
It's not a process.
Yes, and it still managed to pass unanimously all the way through the committee. So, I mean, to me, that said a lot, that everybody could come together this time and agree on that through that whole committee, to bring it in front of the board tonight. So I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just wanted to make sure that that was settled, it did pass unanimously through the facility committee.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve local planning committee four-year district facility plan as presented tonight.
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we need to have a separate motion or an intertwined motion to approve or not approve a potential meeting on this Wednesday public meeting? Or is that something, let's assume this passes, then can we, we have the ability to bring that, if we have to have a discussion about it, we can bring that up as a separate item, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we didn't have to intertwine it with this.
Okay. So motion by Mr. Talby, second by Ms. Ritchie, all of a favor, say aye. Opposed? Most, did you vote?
I voted yes.
Okay. Motion carries. I'm just thinking. Sorry, Gordian, I didn't hear you.
No.
Out of number three.
When you're beat, you're beat.
Well.
But it's not a bad, we'll call it bad beat.
Can we go, is there any reason to, to not go ahead with the public meeting that's already been advertised on Wednesday?
You asked me?
I'm asking anybody.
You're looking at me or you're asking me?
We always make it to the ad, so you know me, I'm like, well, let's do it.
We've already talked about it. I mean, Randy has talked to him, and I know Mr. Christie, done it, we've done some research. It's, we can have it on, we can have it on the.
Okay. I just want, I'll make sure we addressed it all, all in the open, so that's still to go for Wednesday, so if people, the public want to have further input, certainly on either side of this issue, that's their next opportunity to discuss it.
Wednesday at?
I think it's five thirty.
When is the meeting?
Wednesday, five thirty.
And where is the meeting?
Here?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah. Here, here or the, the bigger room or wherever? Here, okay.
Good question.
Eva?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Item number three, discussion of return to school plans.
I sent you all an email, and I made you a hard copy of everything I sent on that. There's a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you, just to see where we counted the team rounds, where we are right now. Here, three weeks ago, we weren't, we were only getting our speed to in-person and through the discussions at the board meeting, you charged us with getting more students involved. That first week, we had 150 students we brought in, and I think now, if you look now, this past week, three weeks later, we're at 1665, and in the, been in the buildings in person. You can see a breakdown in that first sheet there, students receiving in-person instruction at school. We're now, we're running bus routes, and we're busing students in. If you look at the second page of it, students receiving in-person instruction at the school since today on. If you look at that one, we have 566 students in buildings today, that's compared to 240 students of last week, so we more than doubled that again, and we're still increasing it. As folks talk about here, bringing four or five students at a time into the classroom, we're seeing that all across the district.
Can I interrupt you a minute? How are these kids determined? Are they reaching out to the teachers, the teachers calling the students?
Teachers, schools are reaching out to the parents. The parents call in and ask for some help, need help. The principal then works with them to get them scheduled in. Teachers, teachers make those lists, or the school has all our special ed students, still continuing to do that.
But these are special ed and others?
These are special ed and, and other students.
This is all students?
Students across the board. And we're seeing more and more, and this is students that they may, they may have a need in, in reading or some specialty area, but they may also need some additional help with AP class. So it's across a broad spectrum of students coming in. These are students that are some which, and if you look at the next sheet, you'll see how many are transported. Of that 566 that we had in today, we transported 250 of those. So you can see about 50%, and that's over than about what we do on a normal school count, about 50% that we transport, and about 50% of students. Actually, in, in regular times, about 52% transported and 48% is bused in areas brought in by parents, and we're about 50, 50, now pretty close to that. So they're still seeing, still allowing parents to bring them if they don't want to ride the bus, or we provide transportation for those who need it. Those lists, the teachers and the building principals, they make those lists, they submit the transportation a few days in advance. We schedule the times, contact the parents, and tell them exactly what time we're going to be picking the kids up. We're also bringing them in now. Those kids are coming in, they're being fed breakfast, they're being fed at the school, so that's allowed us to work on our protocols. Like Renee was talking about, walking down the hall, six-foot spacing, all those kinds of things, bringing these kids in like we're doing now has given us an opportunity to work, to see how we can more safely do this in the numbers. And as we've seen, we've increased, we continue to increase the numbers. And that leads me into the next part of the plan that I wanted to talk to you about tonight. You see a draft, and I want to emphasize draft letter that will go out to the families. It's a two-page there, it's got information on multiple things. The first thing tells us about the dates that we would, that we're presently planning to transition into a hybrid A V model. This is my recommendation to do this, this is kind of where I am right now. It's a hybrid A V model, structural model, beginning on Friday, October the 30th. That would take the last survey we did, all the students, parents who chose to remain virtual, we removed those from the group, and then all the others that chose the in-person, or any of those folks who did not reply, we put them in the in-person now. Once we're doing that, we're starting, and we're starting this conversation, we're finding those that didn't reply before are now making contact with the schools and determining whether they want to be in-person or, or hybrid, or on, or virtual. So we divided that up at each school. We went through every building you got that last week, went through the buildings we determined by calculation, and we're going back now and we're retaining that, so as the calculations, the formula that they use is a little bit, it provides for a little bit more than six feet of spacing. So we're going back and actually measuring out the rooms, spacing the seats, working with the staff of the buildings, principals of the buildings, and actually setting seats or marks and floor where students would be sitting. And we're finding that we're, we're, our original calculation, we were a little bit light on what we could actually put in, actually we could put a few more than what we thought. So after we divided them up, we went through, we did this by household. We didn't go to alphabet, or north, south, or east, west, or anything like that, we kind of went with the household, as how we could best divide the students up. We've done that. The principals now have their possession, they have the list of the students that have been selected by, by the, in the campus system that we use, that's on the A group, and they have also the, the B group, so they know how many they have of those. Into, you have there, when you look back past that letter, you'll see the blended groups that tells you that each school, how many, at each school chose to remain on business learning, and how many students would be on the hybrid A plan, and how many would be in the hybrid B group, broken down by school that way. As we're meeting with principals, I met with an elementary principal today, we resolved some of the issues. We've not put the list out to parents yet, that's what the letter is going to be about in the next few days. We're going to put those names out on the 20th, so that the parents have at least 10 days prior to the spark back to school, if, if there is some, some reason why they might need to change from an A group to a B group, there could be many reasons. One being maybe a family that has three children and two of them are older kids, and they may be depending on those older children for daycare, or younger ones, and they may need those two older ones on different days, different, so, so at least one of them's home all the time with the, with the young child. So there's reasons, there's form also in that, you see that people can fill out if they want to make an application to change, change the learning platform. We're finding so far that the buildings, the rooms will hold the students that each of these divided up. They're under the capacity of the building, and so we're still working through those to ensure that if there are any rooms, or the principals, in case they have to move the room for one period a day or something, because like Renee talked about, one of her classes may have one, or she may have one more student in her room that actually hold, we'll get out your room, re-measure, re-cap, and make sure. But if that happens, then the principals aware of that, they can make arrangements for somebody to move the classroom, that one out and go to a larger classroom if they need to do that. But this does allow for anyone who wants to choose us to come back to in-person learning to be able to do that. And it's three days a week, and the three days will be virtual, so the building principals are also working on a plan that will come back to you next week, the plans for the buildings, on how they're going to present, the scheduling of the buildings, they're working on those plans. I made this decision, I'm standing strongly and firmly on this right now. I've looked at what information Ms. Christie presented, we've looked at that now for some month and a half with our COVID task force group. One of the criteria they set forth was to come back to full in-person learning, was that we go three weeks with a declining, on that back page, the, the incident rate, the declining rate over seven, eight-year-old average. We're not declining, we're still increasing right now. So at this point, it's nine a week. Now is not the right time to bring all our students back into the schools at one time. I think we can do this hybrid, we can work into it, we're gradually working into it now. We're close to, we're, we're going to be getting close, and some of these schools close to the numbers that they're going to be seeing on that, during that hybrid anyway. I think by the end of the week, we'll be even closer to those numbers, especially the time we roll around another week after this, we're going to be closer to seeing those numbers already. I've said all along, I realize that I certainly respect your input and, and value your input. However it comes down, it is my decision, as I mentioned several times, it is my call made, and I'm the one that's so alone tonight and laid out, worried about staff, students, and, and school. I watched all the schools round, just come back in-person last place in a week, and then they have to go virtual. I've seen that in too many places. I know some schools today even had cases on their eyes inside the schools of kids. I don't want that, there's a reason why we're yellow on that map. We've done things right here, and we're, and some of the places around us haven't. And when we start to do things the way they're doing things around us, we won't be yellow anymore either. And I don't know if it's going to be a challenge to stay probably yellow as it is. That's my feeling right now. I would say that, that we will come back. That's my feeling right now, I would say that, that we will come back in the virtual, in the hybrid A V. However, if, as we get closer to the time, if the numbers still continue to rise, I have to look at staffing. Okay, on transportation right now, we have three bus drivers, substitute bus drivers. As we have 48 routes, we have, we have 51 drivers. And right now, I have, I have a driver, I have two drivers that's not, not able to work right now. They're in isolation or quarantine. So now I have one son. Any day, we find ourselves kind of a problem with staffing, whether it be buses, I'm closing buses. We only have 55 substitute teachers that said they would be willing to come into the schools under these conditions and work. We have more than that down on every accident every day, in the normal conditions, we have more teachers than that night in place. So I need 55 teachers, 55 sons on a normal day without COVID. So I have to worry about that too. As we move closer, we'll continue to monitor this, the task forces will stay together. We're going to continue to look at things and work with the principals and do this as safely as we can, see fit to do it. Any questions, anybody have any questions?
Well, just like a couple of comments, is, I'm on the task force committee as well. We've met two times since our last meeting. And it's evident that, you know, counties that have went all in-person, two weeks later are in the red that we've seen, especially in some part of our state. We also, like what Mr. Christie said, would have been increasing, could have been increasing issues with, with teachers, transportation. There's a lot of variables that need to be considered. You know, I'm in favor, you know, I'm, I'm not a hybrid model, I'm not a hybrid model fan, I've said that in the past. And I believe several members of the committee is not a hybrid fan as well. But with that said, it is probably the best step forward that we can take to try to get kids back in school. You know, the challenge I see from our committee, and it's not, you know, from discussions in our committee, is the instruction to the students in an A V model that the, that the administrators are going to have to work with, with the teachers, to make sure that everyone's getting the same education, whether it's virtual, in-person. When they're in-person, the virtual classes get the same instruction that's on virtual. So, you know, that's going to be, you know, up to the administrators. I'd like to see, you know, what they plan on doing it before the 30th. But I'm fully supportive of what you presented, based upon, we feel like we do need to get back. This is the best solution. I don't think I'm speaking alternative. You know, majority, majority of the committee would have probably voted to stay virtual. But they, but everyone understands that, you know, we do need to try to get students back in, it's important to get them back in. This is the safest route for them. In my opinion.
Yes, Justin, they can. Yeah.
Mr. Christie, on, on your chart, so the always distance learning, the 1,118, I guess, that looks like that would represent 22% of all of the students. So then the converse is 78% is assumed, want to come back?
Yes, that's, we went with that number, but of that 78%, all of them submitted a response. However, to balance this out and plan this, we put a lot in there, assuming they would. Now, we're in the process and will continue. Once these names and the all-call and the email goes out to the parents listening where their student is, there may be some at that point, based on numbers, COVID cases in the community or other, they choose to come out of the, out of the in-person, go virtual, as there could be, you know. We're encouraging when you go to the virtual side, that we, that we need, that's going to be for the nine-week commitment, remainder of the nine-week commitment at that point. And anyone who comes in-person, if things change and there becomes an issue, they'll have that form, they'll have the ability to move from the in-person to go virtual. And that's not to say that we wouldn't work with someone that was on the virtual that wanted to come in. Things might change. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we can, we can do this and, and maybe centered in the end of the nine weeks, we can move into another phase of it and get to a better place.
Well, can we take that off the table then?
Take what off?
The end of the second nine weeks. Because I think that got us. This statement that you have here at the, on this letter that's going out to the parents, to remain in that platform until the end of the second nine weeks.
With the virtual, that's what, that's what we, we want to happen. What can happen is, if we still, if we have to maintain the six-foot distance, and then all of a sudden, everybody wants to come off the virtual and come back in, and now we've got, we have a problem. We can't maintain our six-foot spacing, so that's why we were saying to pick one and go with it. And we've looked at the plans and a lot of the other districts around, and that's pretty much what everybody wants to choose the virtually for a period of time. We're just saying the end of that nine-week time, I'm hopeful that, I wouldn't ever rule that there may be a possibility that things could improve, and maybe we can come back to everybody coming back, closing back up instead of two days, maybe go more days.
That'd be a little bit difficult on high schools and junior highs. People coming back to virtual, coming back into class, I think they're right in saying, once you choose that, you have to. I just, I just don't see how the people that are making schedules at the high school or at the junior high could accept kids coming in. Now, kids having to leave to call their families, situation or something like that, that really doesn't have that effect. That can be easily done if the departments or anything else or something happened there. But it would be a nightmare for counselors if you allow virtual, all of a sudden, say, well, you know, we got homecoming coming up, I want to go to my school.
This week and then go back.
So I, I would agree with that, being able to do that. I think that needs to be probably even harder to put in there, that once you choose that, that's, that's what you've chosen for that kind of virtual part. I just, you know, Mr. Christie, I'm just going to harp again on this communication thing again. You know, I probably don't like other board members that get emails from, from teachers. We get emails from, from parents, you know. I don't know what's going on, I, you know, I don't know what to tell other than to call their schools. I, I mean, are our schools communicating with these parents and letting these parents know this is what we're going to do? Or we've just been waiting for this to come out and, you know, I'll be honest with you. I actually have a parent emailed me yesterday that told me that we were going back to the hybrid model on the 30th. And I'm like, I don't, I don't know that. I mean, that's the first I've heard of it. And, you know, things like that, you know, wherever we go back in, you know, I want to work with everybody, move back in. Guys, we've got to have everybody on site, hey? You know, a teacher emailed me and tell me that they're put in a dangerous situation. That doesn't mean anything, because I don't know what their situation is. They can talk to the principal or the superintendent, because that's where the plan is developed. And, and for parents to say, well, I talked to the teacher, the teacher told me that it was a plan, well, you know, that's, that's a little disheartening to do that. Again, just, you know, communication, communication, communication. You know, we have got to be on top of it, so this is the way we're going to go back. You know, all of our elementary is doing the same thing. Or, you know, councilor is, is Baker and already seeing in the high school in there, you know. Does everybody know what we're going to be doing, what the plan is, what the goals are? You're going to come two days a week, you're going to do these classes. As a, as a high school junior high, they made out their schedules, they know the kids are going to be there, the schedule's been made out, and that is the process to get those schedules made out. You know.
That's what we'll have, the principals will come back in and talk to you about what their schedules are going to look like. That's what the part we're working on. I think the biggest part of miscommunication and the concern from the teachers, I'll speak for the teachers, and that a lot of parents was miscommunication arose. I've never said about coming back full-time in-person. Miscommunication was when the board voted to come back in five, five days a week in-person, then on October the 30th. That's the miss, that's what freaked everybody out.
Well, wait a minute, that motion did not have five days.
Well, that's what got out there.
There was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of discussion.
But if the motion was everybody to come back at the same time.
Yeah, the motion, the motion was to go back to in-person on the 30th. Now, that gave you the ability to go all-in or hybrid, whichever, whichever fits best and safest go for. Now, the miscommunication was we all talked for two hours of going all back in, hybrid, doing different things. And, and, and that, I think that's where the miscommunication came in, because there was a lot of discussion.
Well, parents have to know too, you know, when a parent, you know, sends me an email and says, well, they called me and asked what day of the week they wanted my son and daughter to come back. Well, they're just asking what they want to come back, they didn't say what we're going to do, they didn't say, you know, that's what's missing in this part. I think if they just know exactly what we're going to do, maybe this part here, what we have now, takes us closer to that. And hopefully, every teacher in this district has access to this, and they know the principals make this. So therefore, you know, the worst information that you can give out is just crazy information. And, you know, when a parent calls a teacher and the teacher says, I don't know what's going on, that, you know, that kills us all when that happens. So that has, all this has to make sure that it gets to the teacher. This is what's going to happen, this is what we're going to do. And, you know, let's, let's put this out, let's put this on the, on the website, let's make sure that it's either, and that people know where to go, because even this person said, you know, I looked on the website, tried to find out what was happening. I was going to talk to the teachers from one elementary to another elementary, and they said they're doing this over here, this one says they're doing this over here. You know, I know there has to be, you know, as far as the way the elementarys are set up, there has to be some differences in different things, the way you do things. But for the most part, I really feel like we should have an elementary plan, we should have an intermediate plan, we should have a junior high plan, we should have a high school plan, and all that's out there, and everybody knows. That's for it's happening. Again, once they know that plan, if they want to back out and go virtual, it's a good time to do it right then, so now you know. Like I said, we were identifying these people, so we should have hit some hardcore numbers. But I have no problem with the way we go back. Yes, naturally, I'd like to do it other ways, but I have to respect your decision. If you have to do things what you think will be as safe as possible. And we've got to compromise somewhere down the line to get back in here. We've got to do it. And we've got to find a way to get back in for people to feel comfortable so that we can go full-time in here.
That's the intent of bringing students back in now, and our teachers talk with parents, get students comfortable coming back in the building and seeing when they come back in the building, I keep there and get back in the building, get some semblance of normalcy. These teachers will tell you there is no sense of normalcy in these buildings right now. You know, so we're, we're bringing kids in, in numbers that the teachers can deal with and get comfortable with, and we're growing that number. But our plans will be that on the 30th, on that schedule, you'll see the schedule in there, on what days they're coming back, they're coming back on, you know, the, I might not have included that page pretty often, but I did. But we start off with the, with the B group on Friday the 30th, they're coming, they're transporting. Then we start on Monday, we bring the A group in on Monday, the November the 1st. And then on November the 2nd, we're off for the next day, that's a great day for us to look at. We had both groups in to kind of, at that time, to consider if there's any problems that we hadn't anticipated. And then we're off, everybody's on virtual on Wednesday, and then we start right back in on that 30th, do that week for the B group, and roll through the weekend, and then on Monday, then their A group, whatever they were scheduled for.
Mr. Christie, I want to make sure I understand the boundaries of the decision makers we had here. If the board decided right now, of course, it's not even only the judge that we can decide. If it was the sense of all members, all five members of the board, that we wanted to come back on October 30th for a five-day-a-week instruction to, with 78% worth of people that wanted to come back, then you would say, no, that option is not going to be available. I'm going to say that I'm putting words in your mouth, but you feel that that's unsafe. And so that, that option is essentially, we could pass it, but it's not going to go anywhere. That option is really non-frontal at this point in time for a K through 12, five-day-a-week return-to-school option on, on October 30th. Am I understanding you correctly?
At this point, I would say that I don't think it's safe.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, the boundaries of the playing.
When I say safe, I want to keep the safe distance and all the protocols we're putting in right now, and we'll continue to work. The department, those votes has set those standards, maybe we can get through that centering later.
Okay, so right now, there's, there's no reason for the board even wasting time with the discussion about five-day-a-week, because you're going to block that. So now let's move on to something, and I don't mean, partially, I'm just trying to be realistic here.
That's made my own suggestions, or if you guys find something that we need to look at, I.
That's what I want to go on to you next.
And before you add, just on that one subject, I, if you don't like this, I just.
We're all here trying to figure it out.
I don't, I mean, it's not only safe, not safe, but I don't think it's easy, okay? Like Mr. Ferrito mentioned, we all as a district have to support the plan of all four, that's everyone. Administrations, teachers, parents, and from the last two meetings of task force, I don't think that's supported there for all.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that option is not even available for us, so we don't have to waste time talking about it. At this point in time on October 30th. So I guess my next question, if you are in your staff, if y'all picked around some other variations on the model that, that other districts are doing, that maybe the younger grades might go five days a week and perhaps junior and high school would do hybrid? Have y'all kicked those options or?
Yes, we did, we talked about that, we did conversations about those. However, when you look at the numbers, we felt we could safely bring in the junior high and the high school at the same time.
Well, what some other districts are doing, they're bringing younger grades in five days a week and then doing hybrid on the junior high and high school.
Right now, we're looking, right now, we're looking at two days a week, three days virtual. The cause, largely the cause of the spacing, having spacing in the building, social distancing, no sense of building. And when we can get around that, we can increase those numbers of things.
Okay, then, then my next question, something that other districts are also doing is, is the model that you're proposing is essentially a four-day-a-week instruction model. And it, it might be slightly cumbersome, or maybe even more than slightly cumbersome, but other districts are doing the hybrid on a two-day, three-day type model. So Group A would go two days, one week in virtual, three days. And the next, the next, so the next week, Group A would go three days in virtual. And that way, you're not losing a day of instruction each week.
We're not losing a day of instruction.
Well, I think we are, you're always losing Wednesday.
Well, but not, virtual instruction goes on for those not in class. And you've got the virtual, all virtual students, these teachers still have a plan to work for, so there needs to be a day there that they're, they're in contact with those.
Not everybody's virtual. I'm making packets, we're spending more time on packets planning than we are regular planning. I mean, we have kids that are on virtual, we have kids that are on computers.
Well, I, I, I really don't like cutting one day a week out of in-person instruction. You know, with the social distancing and the number of kids that want to come back forces into not being able to allow everyone to come back. And mathematically, I can understand that, that I'm really uncomfortable with knocking Wednesday out as a day of instruction. And it would really encourage you to, to consider, could we do in every other week scenario? So that we've got in-person instruction for those, those kids. So they essentially, on average, they're getting two and a half days a week instead of two days a week.
Like you do in the college world.
We live an actual college schedule of Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, every Friday, Tuesday, every Thursday.
So that way, we could get, one week, we could get three days instruction, and the next week, we could get two days instruction in, in those classes.
And so you could go from two days a week, get in-person instruction, two and a half days on average. Doesn't seem like much, but I believe that's about 25% more in-person instruction. I certainly would, I would strongly encourage you to give that some serious thought. Other districts are doing it, and I'm sure it's going to be challenging, the whole thing is challenging. The whole thing, I'm sure, is, I, I can't even fathom how difficult it is for our teaching staff and instructors to coordinate all this. And of course, for our parents and everybody to have to go through it, it's extremely challenging. But I, I, I beg you to consider a two-day, three-day alternating model that would give us 25% more in-person time.
I would think, Mr. Christie, was, you know, I would have been running water, whether we want to start doing this, because this seems to be quite the, you're wanting to do, but just to, that could just be a natural progression of what we do. And I would hope that no matter what plan we got, that we've got serious discussions.
no matter what plan we got, that we've got serious discussions going on in this district about that. This is working. That what can we do? This is working. That what can we do? And I don't want to try and keep putting my, Mr. Perdido, I should say, workload on, on teachers with the constant change of whatever. But, you know, our goal is to be in school. I mean, that's what everybody's goal is to get back in school. And, and the more instruction time we can, can get in-person, and I think we saw some things here tonight, you know, uh, you know, we got thirty-five kids pulled off the football field right there because we're in the elders going through this. And, and, yep, there's a lot to blame in there, you know, one way or the other right there with COVID and everything else. And it's just a new thing for everybody. I think everybody just has to, has to jump in there. But again, um, whatever plan we go with, let's get it out there and let's get it out there quick and let's do it often. And let's get people knowing what's going on. And the more we can get them in the building, I, I think the better. But everybody knows too, you're going to have to think about, you know, what effects this has on staff and whatever else and how they adjust and adjust to this.
As we go through to readjust our, our calculations of the room size once we can safely distance in those rooms, there is some room in a lot of those rooms to where students that may be on Monday and Tuesday, a B, a B group student could actually attend those days. So, there is a potential for students to get up to four days. There is some potential to do that right off the bat as we, we know that going in. Some very, some very sped students, especially when things are getting more than two days a week.
So, potentially the Wednesday could be, or- Or, again, I don't want to muddy the waters. I know we got to put a plan out there and try to stick with something. I don't understand.
And without confusion, I mean, I'm in Monday and Tuesday, there's some extra seats and some rooms that maybe a B student could come in on Monday and Tuesday. I'll still, you know, come back on Thursday. So, there's some potential to increase the numbers as our goal is looking at what can we do to continually increase that to get to a point where everybody's back.
Can I just make a couple of, I don't want to jump on anybody's, just some, just some... Did you guys get the email on the band? Is there a reason why the band can't perform at halftime? Is there a-
They're going to. They did in the other night.
I mean, I mean, we have a, they didn't go out on the field. That's what I mean is that, what I was told, they weren't allowed out on the field to do their show.
Oh, they, they have now.
And I don't know. I mean, I told them, it's not my call.
Just on, on the last Friday night football game, they have, they have some others where they are to do halftime shows. It just wasn't that night.
But I, I, I-
It was senior night.
Did y'all get the same email? That same, I didn't, I didn't know if there was a reason why we couldn't put them on there or whatever. And I know that there's been a lot of things taken away from them as well. So, I want to do that.
They're doing senior night another night. Right? Is that what you told me?
Their senior night on that night when just the band is recognized or going to perform that night.
I just know that, that I have been asked about that.
So, there was some, wasn't there a recommendation in that document from KHSA, KHSA?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but I think part of it had to do with the bands in the stands and, and I think the question, at least in front of, in my mind on it, was the band on the field during their show. That, you know, if we're still at twenty percent, maybe the band, the whole band can't be up in the stands, but they could be up on the field doing their show. And I believe what you just told us is, this last Friday didn't work out because there were two of the other things going on. But you fully expect that the band is going to be able to do a show at halftime or before a football game. So, they, all the work that they've done to be able to, um, show off.
Just as a housekeeping, um, our handbooks, it looked like Phoenix Academy was updated, but none of the rest of the handbooks are updated. They still got the nineteen, twenty letters and, and everything else in there. So, all the old things probably need to be in their school for a month. So, we need to, to kind of get those. We got people that are coming in and looking for some tracks. Those may be updated.
I have just one other question. Um, we discussed a little bit about this in task force, but can you, what road does the site, the site-based council have on the thirtieth on providing recommendation or approval for?
They'll do the scheduling, students inside the building. They'll do the plan from the teachers inside the building, how they, how they'll direct that, uh, how they'll utilize their staffing and their teachers.
They need to do that, I mean, that, we, they, we have time, they have time to do that between now and-
We met Friday with the principals and went over the plan, what, where we're headed with it. Uh, I, I know it's, it's, it's going to be tough. I mean, to pull it, we're, we're in places that we've never been before. So, it's difficult for everybody. And we'll do the best we can to ever build.
But we're expecting principals in next week, correct? Calling out their plan.
Next, next week is your regular scheduled meeting. That's the last one scheduled this month. So, that would be the last one scheduled before we would start back.
Any more questions, comments? All right. If not, we need a motion. All right. Motion by Mr. Perdido.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Talby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five to zero.